So, good evening and welcome everybody to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, April 24th, 2025. I will lead us in the flag salute. Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under the ground indivisible, one ever taken to justice. Thank you everyone, please be seated. Welcome everybody who's in the audience, in the chambers. With that, I entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to propose a amendment if I may.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Fertani, please.
All right, first, we had a proclamation in front, in front of A, 5A. Recognizing Lori Bodie.
Okay, so 5A?
Yes.
Right?
And then moving 10 other business to in front of consent calendar.
Okay, thank you, and that's because of time constraints of the council member, and I appreciate the consideration. Do I hear a second for adopting the agenda this minute? Mr. Lebo.
Point of inquiry. Does the council need to pass a motion today to ask the city to prepare the administrative process needed to fill the vacancy according to our governors?
No, we'll be discussing that later. It's your prerogative, but we'll be discussing that later steps.
So we don't need it as a, an agenda item?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do I hear a second for the amended change?
Second.
And move in seconded any further discussion. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, I think I heard, I heard an aye, or I saw an aye mouth from Ellen, thank you Ellen, is that correct? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Okay, thank you, everybody. We're moving on to public comments. The council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor or council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control, then the mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker to suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public, which is our practice. Comments are limited to a three-minute timeline. Chief, thank you, chief. Okay. Starting off the, the group here would be Donna Hockey, Donna, welcome.
C, where do I use this?
I think you're on right now.
I'm on right now, oh, good, good evening, council members and, and Mayor Johnson. Today I'm here on, Donna Hockey, 5022 Northeast 180th Street, Lake Forest Park. Sorry about that. Today I'm here on Newsom's behalf to thank you all for accepting the proclamation of Affordable Housing Week. Some of you know that I've been on a small resident housing advocacy group. Lori Bodie, who we've lost recently, was a housing champion and she was an early and enthusiastic believer in our efforts. We will surely miss her, she spent a lot of time with us talking and giving us the support we needed. Housing affordability is the root cause of homelessness and we also want to invite you to our May 14th, 11:00 AM to 12:00 lunch and learn with a speaker who is a University of Washington professor, author Greg Colburn, who wrote the book Homelessness is a Housing Problem and did a ton of research on the subject. So it'll be quite informative and I hope you can all enjoy, and join us on May 14th. And thank you for your support as a Newsom member, I've been a member for several years. I see the networking, the connections, the communication, the problem solving that happens in these, in these group meetings, supporting all the nonprofit housing services in our area. And as you know, it's more important than ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna, I appreciate your time, we all do. Margaret Hudson, your next stop, please. Oh, and, and Rich, I guess Richard. Yeah, go ahead, go right ahead, choose your, choose your order.
Well, I'm just, I'm here regarding your resolution on the inclusion of our property in the PBRS system. And I just want to say that in the 50 years that we've lived here, we've enjoyed having the one acre of wooded property adjoining our, our residence. And we'd like to maintain that for the benefit of all the citizens of Lake Forest Park. So, not a lot to say except that it's wooded, it's occupied by deer and other, well, coyotes occasionally, other species. And it's, it's a benefit for not only our property, but our surrounding neighbors and really the whole community. So, that's really all I wanted to tell you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard, we appreciate your commitment to the environment. Margaret, did you want to speak as well, or, or, okay, thank you. Josh, I think that's Rose, no? Am I correct? Yeah, please. Welcome, Josh.
Read the stuff down, sure I can find it. Hi, my name is Josh Rosenow, live on, we've corresponded, haven't been into the council chambers in a little while. I'd plan to come here to celebrate that the legislature has sent 5595 to the governor, shared streets are on their way, as well as laws that are going to reduce parking minimums and encourage transit-oriented development. And all those are going to open up exciting opportunities for the city and for us to create community in new ways and welcome new neighbors. But last week's shocking news about the sudden loss of council member Bodie upended that. She was a liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board and I'd gotten to know, know her through that and, and see her enthusiasm for the city. Barely a month ago, I've sent messages to some of you saying this already, but she was at our meeting making plans for exciting projects like Perkins Way and the new lakefront park, Healthy Streets, New Art and Horizon View and the city's summer programs. I'm sure many of you on the council and here today had similar experiences with her even very recently. And her absence here is an incalculable loss to us all. Her dedication to this community has been and will continue to be an inspiration to me and I'm sure to, to all of us. I'm sorry for your losses and the city's loss, may her memory be a blessing.
Thank you, Josh, appreciate your sentiment. With that, are there any other members of the community in the council chambers that would like to give public comment? Okay, with that, we will close public comment. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate your thoughts. With that, we're going to move on to proclamations and I apologize, I tried to hold it together on Monday. Got mostly through there. We, we're, I'll read the proclamation a minute, but we're deeply saddened by the loss of our friend and colleague. It's a shock, it's a big hole in our community, not only for this council and the citizens, but for other bodies that Lori was part of, Third Place Commons, her work with Washington, environmental groups like Waterworks, other different groups out there. I've received numerous outpourings of grief from, and, and sentiment from various groups that she's been involved with, with her, in her storied 40-plus year career. I would start by saying that she was a dear, dear friend. I will, it will take me years to not pick up the phone and call her about some crazy idea that I had, and she did that with me. We're going to take a moment after we read the proclamation to allow our colleagues to reflect if they would like to on Deputy Mayor Bodie's career and friendship with all of us. It's a, it's a deep loss and it's something that I know deep down, we recognize that she would expect all of us to continue carrying on the good work, many of the things that she started and the rest of the work that we're doing here. It's a huge testament to her. I will hold it together. A huge testament to her rapport with the entire community that we have many members of our police department here. It was very fitting that one of our sergeants lowered the flag on, on Sunday after I issued the executive order. And I hope that we all can reflect on the importance that each person brings to this community and particularly those who choose to volunteer their time and serve in a capacity that sometimes can be very challenging. She was a wonderful human being. With that, I'll read the, the proclamation. Deputy Mayor Lori Bodie. Whereas Deputy Mayor Lori Bodie faithfully served the residents of the City of Lake Forest Park for more than five years with unwavering dedication, professionalism and integrity. And whereas born in Rhode Island and drawn to the Pacific Northwest in the 1970s, she brought a lifetime of public spirited energy, writing school grants, launching a teacher wish list for shoreline classrooms, championing youth and education initiatives. And whereas Deputy Mayor Bodie applied her extensive legal and natural resources expertise to guide the city council, planning commission and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through landmark legislation and policies that have strengthened our community. And whereas Deputy Mayor Bodie was a consummate community leader, volunteer and decades-long environmental advocate whose work inspired countless residents to protect and steward our national resources. And whereas our ability to unite diverse perspectives, seek common ground and advance, advance the common good, embody the very spirit of civic engagement, engagement and public service. Her ability, I should say. And whereas Deputy Mayor Bodie steadfastly championed Lake Forest Park's environmental ethic, encouraging thoughtful, gentle growth that preserves the character and beauty for our city, city for future generations. And whereas the city council, city staff and the entire community mourn her passing on April 17th, 2025, and extend heartfelt condolences to her family, friends and all those lives she's touched. Now therefore, the mayor and city council, the City of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim deep appreciation and gratitude for the extraordinary life, leadership and legacy of Deputy Mayor Lori Bodie and urge all community members to honor her memory by continuing her work towards environmental stewardship, civic collaboration and compassionate service. Sign this 24th day of 2025. I'd like to take just a moment of silence for Deputy Mayor Bodie, please. Thank you, everyone. She did touch all of our lives, I would tell you a strange coincidence that she and her husband Peter, who our, our heart goes out to, bought their house from my parents' best friends. And while we didn't know each other at the time, I found out that later from Peter and Lori and I thought it was a very interesting coincidence. With that, I'd like to open up any comments of council members and thoughts about Deputy Mayor Bodie. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to basically emphasize that, you know, she was a mentor to me. Everything I know about civic leadership, pretty much she was modeling as deputy mayor. Basically a very strong champion on our council. I know she had lots of interests, I appreciate the fact that the, our, one of her accomplishments was continued funding of public safety and this is shown by our officers showing up in support and we, I really appreciate that, thank you. The other things that she was interested in, for instance, as the mayor pointed out, environmental stewardship, she modeled to the T and the fact that basically she was involved in so many of these groups and was so generous with her time and kind to basically shepherd me through all these awkward first meetings of various people and I, I'll never forget that. So, I, I should stop, sorry.
You're fine, colleagues, any other? Yes. Senator, please.
I was not lucky enough to be in her, a friend of Lori Bodie, just different circles, different times. But as her colleague, I always appreciated that when we didn't see eye to eye, it was about coming together. And I think that really says a lot about who she is, especially as a lawyer, wasn't winning, it was coming together here in her civil, civic service. And it was a great. It was, it was good to look up to a person bringing those qualities to what can always turn into a contentious environment and I really appreciate her bringing that to this council.
Thank you, Councilmember Riddle. Colleagues, any other thoughts? Please, Councilmember Good.
I didn't know Lori as, as long as most everybody in this room because I'm relatively new to Lake Forest Park. But I know that when I was running for council, that one of the first things I had to do was have a meeting with her. And I'd heard a lot about her and so of course I was a little bit intimidated by what, what this was going to be like. And so we sat down and we actually found out that we shared a lot of history in working in, in a man's world, so to speak. She worked at a dam and I worked at, or I mean at the, yeah. Same thing, that one. But one thing that I do appreciate about her as a politician is that she was a politician above all and she was a politician for everyone. So she was a politician for people that voted for her, people who didn't vote for her. And she cared about everyone and she didn't climb to the role that she had on the backs of others. So she truly cared about her community and everyone in it and she'll be missed.
Thank you. Councilmember Lebo.
Lori's going to be missed, I'm going to miss Lori. She was a friend and a mentor and an amazing leader. She had an amazing life and the contributions that she's made for the Northwest and for the City of Lake Forest Park is something to really be admired and her legacy will live on and she will be missed.
Councilmember, Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, I, I admired Lori's professionalism, her dedication to public service, the fact that she ran for reelection two years ago in light of, of her health that showed her dedication to the City of Lake Forest Park. I appreciated her wisdom, her, her willingness to have open discussions about sometimes contentious political issues and to very clearly explain her perspective on things and so that we as a council could reach a consensus. So I, I very much appreciated working with Lori and yes, she will be missed and my condolences to her friends and family.
Thank you, Councilmember, any other thoughts? Okay, oh yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Saunders, I apologize, please.
Okay, it's all right. I just wanted to say I, I had the, the honor of meeting Lori nearly two years ago during our campaign for city council and I found Lori to be one of those people who you immediately like. She, although you know, one could use like council member Good was saying, she was, she could be a little intimidating, she's, she's brilliant, her vast knowledge and experience can be very intimidating. But I found her very welcoming and warm nature, you know, put me at ease and I found her a, a very kind and welcoming person. I also admired the way Lori kept a smile and positive outlook on even the most controversial topic. Just always trying to do the best thing. And she maintained unity and cohesion amongst the citizens and city officials. And she was just a brilliant woman and her, our loss, her loss will be greatly felt.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll just close by saying, well, a couple of things, one, Tracy and I had the, the pleasure of, we, we've been working together for many years, what's called the Deputy Mayor Agenda, Agenda Meeting. And a couple of four weeks ago, I believe it was, we, for some reason, we were unable to get our scheduling sorted, I had issues, Lori had issues, Tracy had issues. Phil was, I was unavailable a couple of the times we tried to sort it out and we finally found a time on Friday, normally we meet earlier in the week. And we set the time and almost immediately I thought, you know, let's, we haven't gone to lunch together for six months at least, it was November, I believe. And so we sat down, I immediately texted folks and said, hey, let's, let's grab lunch. And so we, we, everybody was yay, let's do it. So we sat down at the local 104 and spent 90 minutes having a wonderful time. And I am so thankful that we did because it was very short, shortly thereafter. And, and I have to tell you folks, humility is one of the most important things I believe in a council, a council member can have or an elected official, public servant. And she reflected back on how headstrong she was. Her first year on council, thought she could change the world as we all believe we can do. And then the reality of the world hits us in the face and I will cherish that lunch with Councilmember Fertani and Lori for as long as I live. And our hearts and prayers go out to her family. And it's my sincerest hope that they will find some solace in the great work that this group continues, will continue to do. So, thank you, everybody, for kind, kind words and I know the family appreciates it. We're going to move on to other proclamations now. We're going to move on to recognizing April 20th, 2020 through 26th, 2025 as National Volunteer Week and honoring citizen volunteers. That's Councilmember Goldman, please, Councilmember.
Yes, National Volunteer Week. Whereas millions of American volunteers give their time to help others, contributing over 30 million volunteer hours per year worth over $635 million. And whereas National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 and has grown exponentially each year with thousands of volunteer projects and special events scheduled throughout the week. And whereas the City of Lake Forest Park seeks to achieve strong community spirit through active civic participation. And whereas there are many dedicated volunteers who serve the city on the Planning Commission, Tree Board, Climate Action Committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Civil Service Commission and Salary Commission, helping make Lake Forest Park a more desirable place to live. And whereas volunteers play an important role in determining the direction of the city now and in the future. And whereas during this week, we call on all community members and organizations to help us thank, celebrate and recognize the contributions of all volunteers. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Lake Forest Park proclaim April 20th through 26th, 2025 as National Volunteer Week in Lake Forest Park as a time to celebrate our citizen volunteers and recognize the crucial role played by volunteers in our community. Sign this 24th day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we have recognizing May 4th through 10th, 2025 as International Municipal Clerks, Clerks Week.
Right, thank you. So Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, the time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the official, that's sorry, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at all other levels and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk and recognize the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to communities they represent. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim May 4th to May 10th, 2025 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Sign this 24th day of April, 2025. And on a personal note, I'd really like to thank our municipal clerk, Matt McLean, who this week just stepped up through all of the changes that have been going on and had things done even before I need, I knew I needed them, so thank you so much.
Very, yes. Well, the the man behind the curtain, you know, in a good way, is, is Matt and he has, he does anticipate the needs of the council and the administration and council leadership particularly. And we do thank you for that, Matt, I know it goes unrecognized most of the year, but darn it, we really do appreciate it, we couldn't function without you, man. And you, for the edification of the general public, he runs a really awesome passport program. So, and contributes to our bottom line, doesn't it, Lindsay? Yes, way to go, he keeps expanding it and it keeps generating revenue that's much needed and a service for the community that's really important. Okay, we're going to move on to item C, recognizing May 12th through 16th, 2025 as affordable housing. Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, defines affordable housing as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas the Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County meets nearly 200,000 net new housing units for the households that are at or below 80% area median income. Whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. And whereas the CDC recognizes safe, healthy and affordable housing within communities of opportunity as a key social determinant of health. Whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employees and the community as a whole. And whereas, united to raise public awareness, people, organizations and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. And whereas the City of Lake Forest Park endorses the goals, objectives and purposes of Affordable Housing Week and in doing so firmly recommits itself to ensuring that our community's recovery from the crisis at hand is equitable and that all people in Lake Forest Park live with dignity, dignity in safe, healthy and affordable homes. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the City of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim May 12th through 16th, 2025 as Affordable Housing Week. Find this day.
Thank you, Councilmember Riddle. Okay, we're going to move on to a public hearing now, it's a public hearing on Resolution 24 2014 authorizing the mayor to execute a recommendation to King County for the Hudson Properties enrollment in the public, public benefit rating system, PBRS program, I believe. Mark, are you teaming this up? Director Hoffman, Community Development Director, welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I get the pleasure of passing off to David Greatham, a planner with the city to give a presentation. We also have Megan Kim from King County, I believe, online. And they get to present and handle the public hearing and the resolution tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you for the introduction, Mark. David, you have the floor, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. As, this is Dave Greatham, temporary planner with Mark's team and again, as Mark said, Megan Kim is King County's lead on the Public Benefit Rating System Program. So we're privileged to have her with us this evening as well, as she is also the author of the staff report in her packet. So a very brief recap of where we've been, in March, approximately one month ago, we presented to you just a general overview of the Public Benefit Rating System Program. The three highlights of that, I want to just recap, would be that it was created by the Open Space Taxation Act at the state level. It's enacted locally in King County through King County Code. The Public Benefit Rating System is referenced in King County Code 20.36. And the result of applicants that are approved for the program, which we'll talk about the Hudson's in just a minute, is that the, if they're determined eligible, then the appraised land value for that portion enrolled in the program is reduced in property value. So it, it results in a tax reduction for the applicant. The trade-offs are that the city or the public benefits from protected land if it is enrolled in the program. So let's talk about the Hudson application for a minute. The Hudson application actually has been in for some time, so thank you Hudson's for your patience and thank you King County for your guidance in the process. If we could jump to the aerial, or if we could show the aerial photo, Matt, that, the color aerial photo, I can describe where the property, the project site is and talk a little bit about the application. And while Matt's working on that, the Hudson's have applied for enrollment in the Public Benefit Rating System for two of their three lots. Mr. Hudson mentioned approximately an acre of forested land. Those are their two vacant lots and then a very small sliver of their home site parcel, which is forested and abutting the vacant lots. There we go, thanks, Matt. So let me step back and tell you where this property is, this is approximately 1,000 feet west of the intersection of Northeast 185th and Ballenger Way. So this is just, just about eight or nine lots west of that intersection, straight due west. And the lots in yellow are the two vacant lots that Mr. Hudson mentioned earlier in his presentation. And the lot in sort of a light greenish blue just to the left of that. And the lot in sort of a light greenish-blue just to the left of that, point three nine acres, I know it's hard to see, is the home site. So, just a very small sliver of that home site, that forested fringe abutting the the forest lot to the east would also be enrolled in the program if it is de- determined to be eligible or approved. So, a total of one point four or five acres between those three and a total of one point zero six acres is requested to be enrolled in the program. So, very quickly, the staff report in your packet was prepared again by Megan Kim, uh, the county's lead on the Public Benefit Rating System, and that system assigns points uh, based on the applicant's application. You also have the Hudson's application in your packet this evening. And the Hudson's were determined to be eligible for the program on three key areas: urban open space, watershed protection, and resource restoration. I think I inadvertently said resource protection in, in my cover memo, but the third one is resource restoration, so that it could include removal of invasive species and restoring the native vegetation, for example. So, if approved, this would qualify that just over one acre of the total one point four or five for a sixty percent reduction in the taxable property values. So, what's the fiscal implication for the city? The twenty twenty-four taxes, as reported in the staff report in your packet, were approximately ninety-four hundred for the two vacant lots combined and another approximately sixty-four hundred for the home site lot to the, to the west, to the left there. So, if you assume the current approximate rate of eight percent of that taxable, the property taxes are, uh, then provided to the city, and that hovers just a hair under that for twenty twenty-five, it looks like, on the King County site, but it, it's been hovering around eight percent. Based on that assumption and current numbers, we estimate there would be an approximately five hundred dollar reduction in the tax revenues received by the cities uh, annually for the Hudson properties if enrolled in the program. That can, of course, fluctuate based on property tax levy rates, but again, the amount the city is receiving from the total revenue collected by the county is running at about just a hair under eight percent right now. So, that, that is where we came up with the estimate for about five hundred dollars. That could fluctuate depending on the levy rate. So, that really summarizes the application, uh, the recommendations for approval based on eligibility described in the staff report. And if you have any questions for me or for, uh, Megan Kim, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, David. Colleagues, questions for, um, Mr. Greatham? Yeah, Deputy Mayor Fratton.
Hey, thank you very much for the, uh, report. It's very informative, and, uh, this is an amazing program that I'd never heard of before. And I'm wondering, um, so with the point system, do they take into account the environmental services that this mature second-growth forest, uh, can provide? I know that there's various aspects of it, but, you know, the point system seems a little squishy. Uh, do they take into account environmental services?
And I'll defer to Megan on that. Thank you.
Um, so, we only have twenty different categories. Well, first of all, sorry, let me back up. Thank you so much for having me tonight, councilmembers, mayors. And also, I do want to, um, share my condolences with you all. She sounded, Lori sounded like a absolutely amazing public servant, and we all strive to be that. Um, so, going back to, um, councilmember, um, question about, um, you know, I'm going to say no, it doesn't take that into account. We have very defined, um, categories, which you can see, um, on one of the pages, page four. It starts to, oh, wait, sorry, not page four. It starts on page three. Um, those are the open space resources that any property in King County or cities that would like to participate are eligible for. And those have very well-defined, um, definitions and how we apply them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kim. Appreciate it. Colleagues, other questions for our friends that have joined us tonight on this? We had a previous presentation. It comes over, um, Riddle.
Just to clarify, the application as approved does not provide public access to this, but it is protecting it for, from future development. For those that are listening, it's not going to be a publicly accessible space. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes. A public benefit system has an awkward name. Um, we do have public access categories, but essentially the public benefits from private landowners conserving and preserving natural resources.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification for our community.
Yes, Councilmember Goldman.
Um, yes, so I'm looking at the application, and the recommendation is that we approve it, um, based on the categories of urban open space, watershed protection, and resource restoration, but not for conservation easement. So, I was just curious if you could explain the conservation easement por- portion of that.
Yes, thank you for that question. Um, we, we did kind of run into a timing issue. Um, so, this, uh, application was approved by King County in, um, twenty twenty-three, I believe in November, um, due to a variety of reasons at the city of Lake Forest Park. Um, they were no longer eligible for that conservation easement, um, because the due date had passed. And once a due date has passed, as it, it's been approved by at least county council, um, they, we can no longer recommend that category.
I see.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for that clarification. I was going to actually ask the same question. I appreciate that, Councilmember Goldman. Colleagues, other questions for our friends? Okay, uh, let's see. With that, we're, um, questions from council? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open, um, on, uh, Resolution twenty-five, two zero one four authorizing the mayor to execute a recommendation to King County for the Hudson Properties enrollment in the Public Benefit Rating System, P B R S program. No public comments. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to make public comment specifically about the Hudson, Hudson application? Okay, thank you, everybody. We will close the public hearing. And with that, um, we didn't have any questions that have arisen from council or from the public regarding that. And so, with that, we're going to move on to Resolution twenty-five, two zero one four authorizing the mayor to execute a recommendation to King County for the Hudson Properties enrollment in the Public Benefit Rating System, P B R S system. Uh, I would entertain a motion. Councilmember Riddle.
I'd like to, I believe, move to suspend the three-touch rule for, uh, this vote. I believe that it's been long enough, and it is a public benefit to the whole community, and I think we shouldn't keep them waiting.
Second.
And moving second to suspend the three-touch regu- rule regarding Resolution twenty-five, two zero one four. Are there any further comments or discussion, counselor, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of suspending the three-touch rule regarding Resolution twenty-four, two zero one four, please signify by saying aye.
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 I, I can read lips, so I got ayes there. Are there any nays? There are no nays. The ayes have it to suspend the three-touch rule. Councilmember Riddle.
I would like to move Resolution twenty-five, two zero one four, authorizing the mayor to execute a recommendation to King County for the Hudson Properties enrollment in the Public Benefit Rating System, P B R S program.
We'll hear a second.
Second.
And moving second, any further discussion on Resolution twenty-five, two zero one four, authorizing the mayor to execute a recommendation to King County for the Hudson Properties enrollment in the Public Benefit Rating System, P B R S program. Councilmember Riddle.
I just want to thank, uh, the Hudson's for not only doing what you're doing, but also bringing this program to light in this public space. Uh, for those that might be thinking of doing a very similar thing, so I appreciate the time and effort you've put into this process. I think it will bear more fruit.
Colleagues, uh, Deputy Mayor Fratton.
Yes, and thank you. And, uh, I wanted to thank the Hudson's as well for, again, bringing this to our attention and, uh, for the, uh, just the, um, what is the word? The impulse to basically preserve these, uh, features for our future generations. Um, I hate to say it, but there's increasingly less mature second growth, you know? We used to say that about old growth, right? But now we're talking about second growth, and, uh, the fact that you can actually spot Lake Forest Park's boundary practically from an aerial photo by looking at where the green stuff is. I think that's a remarkable thing, and thank you for doing your part in it.
Thank you. Tracy. Councilmember Lebo.
I would also like to express appreciation and your persistence. You have been at this for a long time, and it's really, truly a public benefit. So, thank you so much.
Colleagues, any, Councilmember Goldman, excuse me.
Yes, I'm also supportive of this. Um, I'm glad that you've brought this. I didn't realize this program even existed, so thank you for bringing it to, to my attention. Um, I'm hoping we can use this as an educational tool for the community to encourage others that have similar parcels and that, um, we can figure out how to make the process more efficient. So, apologies that it's taken so long to, to get yours approved.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just quickly, a chair's privilege, I would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Ditto to what Councilmember Goldman said. Thank you for bringing this. Um, uh, Mr. Frattoni, uh, gets tired of hearing me say that I've discovered some more undeveloped parcels that need to be preserved. I do it on a weekly basis. There's lots of opportunities out there to preserve the natural environment. And you may have seen the Washington Post article recently that was just updated. Lake Forest Park consistently in this region has grown our tree canopy and preserved it to the benefit of everybody. Um, and you look at the surrounding areas, it's not quite the same. So, we thank you for bringing this to our attention, and hopefully it can be, um, we can learn from potentially the mistakes that were made and move these things forward quicker for people's benefit. So, thank you. Hearing, uh, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adoption of Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, two zero one four authorizing the mayor to execute a recommendation to King County for the Hudson Properties enrollment in the Public Benefit Rating System program, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Hudson's. We appreciate it. And thank you, staff. Um, David, and also, thank you very much. Uh, Megan, we appreciate your time. This is an important program. Okay, with that, we're moving on to, uh, per the amended agenda, we're moving on to item number ten. Wait, give me a second to get over here. Um, and this is the other business section of electing a vice chair of the city, uh, city council. I would preface this by saying there may be some questions in advance for, uh, admit, uh, excuse me, Attorney Pratt, uh, regarding this. We've had some emails. I hope her email explanation was helpful for you all. I know this is difficult for all of us. I think the most important thing is to recognize that, um, as sad as it is, this kind of unforeseen circumstance is literally unforeseen, and it's incredibly difficult to navigate through. But we have an obligation to the community and to each other to make sure that we continue the good work that our colleague who has departed us, that, uh, began much, a lot of it, and also supported us on. So, with that spirit in mind, are there any questions for Ms. Pratt or Ms. Pratt? Would you like to, to lead off with refreshing their memories about what was sent out this afternoon, just in case people didn't get a chance to read it? What's your pleasure, council? Let's start with a, a quick refresher, if you don't mind, Ms. Pratt.
Okay, I'll do that. Um, under council's governance rules, uh, the vice chair takes over when the chair, uh, i- in the chair's absence. And I'm interpreting that to be also, um, to replace, um, Chair Bodie after her passing. I understand there's probably, um, some who disagree with that interpretation. But that is my interpretation, that the vice chair would take over and become the chair. And then, as the chair, um, the chair has, um, part of their duties is to, um, shepherd the, the business of the council, and I think that would be also to call for an election of a vice chair, a new vice chair. The other option would be to wait until twenty twenty-six, January, and elect a vice chair at that time. Um, under the normal course of your business, every two years, electing a chair and a vice chair. So, that's my reading of the council rules. Um, and I believe that also is in accord with, um, generally with Robert's rules, that the vice chair take over when the, um, chair seat is vacated.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Appreciate that very much. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Pratt? Yeah, Councilmember.
How long, how long does that term last?
Until January of twenty twenty-six, you have elections in even years, every two years. Under your rules, your governance manual.
Thank you.
Colleagues, other questions for Ms. Pratt? Okay, with that, uh, I'm sorry, did you have questions?
Oh, sorry. Uh, I just wanted to add something to what Attorney Pratt said, which was, I think, on your desks, there's actually that bit of the governance manual that, uh, um, covers the the council chair, vice chair thing.
Well, this, what I have is, I don't, yeah, this is more for the vacancies. It's okay. No, that's fine. So, with that, colleagues, as it, as is the protocol and the tradition, I will hand the gavel over to, uh, Deputy Mayor Frattoni to hold an election for council vice chair. Deputy Mayor Frattoni.
Right, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And so, I think at this point, it'd be appropriate to call for, uh, nominations for the uh, position of council vice chair.
Yes, I would like to nominate Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. I accept the nomination.
Are there? Give me a second. Yeah. Oh, I need a second.
No, just for.
No, parliamentary, um, sorry, no seconds are needed for nominations for.
Apologies. Okay. All right, thank you so much. Um, so, are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate John Lebo.
Do you accept the nomination?
I do accept. Okay.
And, uh, Councilmember Saunders, you were about to say something?
Yeah, I apologize. Um, I would like to nominate, um, Councilmember Larry Golden.
Do you accept the nomination?
Um, I will respectfully decline, since I've already nominated somebody else. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, are there any other nominations? I think we've heard from everybody pretty much, right? Okay, all right. Okay, so at this point, I'm closing nominations. All right, so, um, at this point, I think we, uh, hold a vote. So, the candidates are, uh, Councilmember Riddle and Councilmember Lebo. Okay. So, um, I guess we'll just go in alphabetical order. Um, all those in favor of, uh, Councilmember Lebo becoming the council vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
So, I heard one, two, three. Okay. And all, okay, all those in favor of electing, uh, Councilmember Riddle for the position, please say aye.
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 And do I get a vote?
Mm-hmm.
I was going to vote aye. So, we have a tie. Okay, so, um, what does our government's manual say? I will defer to, uh, excuse me, Attorney Pratt. I, I'm gonna
I, I'm gonna
say for about here.
I suggest, um, that you'll need to continue voting until you have a majority. I don't believe this is an instance where the mayor can break the tie.
Right.
Hey, so, I guess at this point, um, we could take statements from the candidates to try to sway one or the other. So, I think, again, going in, um, alphabetical order, let's start with Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you. Thank you for the honor of being nominated as a vice chair. I have served seven years as a planning commission member. I've lived in Lake Forest Park now for about twenty-five years. I've been on the council three and a half years. I, um, enjoy living in Lake Forest Park. I think my background, um, as both an architect, uh, to have the vision that I think to lead the city is important. Uh, my back, and to honor Councilmember Riddle, she is also an architect. So, uh, a challenge there. All right. We both serve on the, uh, Budget and Finance Committee. I'm currently as the chair. I have a, a respect for the institution of the city council and would be honored to be your vice chair. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you, Councilmember Lebo. Um, so, ditto. Um, yes, so, uh, our trajectory is similar. I will be councilmember for nine years come June. Um, served on Planning Commission for two years and have been involved in liaisons with Planning Commission, um, and, uh, obviously on budget and finance, and I was trying to remember how many years that was, but I think it's something close to six years. Um, and I feel that I have the experience to usher this community forward in the coming year and through the, through the next election. Um, as I was part of Budget and Finance Committee, when we transitioned to the biennial budget, and when we did, uh, all our, you know, uh, budget adjustments and amendments since then, and I feel like I have the dual experience of council and budget and finance.
All right, thank you. Do any, does anybody? All right, thank you. Do any, does anybody, any of the other council members want to speak in favor of one of the candidates? Are you, Councilmember Good?
Yes, both Councilmember Lebo and Riddle are very similar in their backgrounds. One of my main reasons for nominating Councilmember Lebo is his astute vision of the budget. And he can find things, it seems, no one else can. So I think in light of our budgetary issues, that his ferreting out a lot of options for us moving forward has been significant. Not that Councilmember Riddle has not done the same, but maybe not to the same extent.
All right. Anyone else? All right, Councilmember Goldman?
Yes, thank you. In my mind, both Councilmembers, Riddle and Lebo, would be excellent vice chairs. I have a lot of respect for both of them. For me, a big part of it is overall experience. And that with Lori's passing, we are a relatively young council in terms of how many years, on average, we've each been on the council. And so the fact that Councilmember Riddle has been on for, she said, nine years at this point, to me, that that speaks a lot about experience involved in city governance. And for that reason, that that is why I'm supporting her for vice chair.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, I guess at this point, we go for another round of voting then. So again, we'll do it in alphabetical order. All those in favor of electing Councilmember Lebo for the council vice chair position, please say aye. All right, so it's three, okay. And all those in favor of electing Councilmember Riddle for the council vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I entertain a motion to order pizza. All right, so Attorney Pratt, I have a question for your point of inquiry. Is it okay to table this until a future meeting?
Yes, I was just thinking the same thing. Give everybody a chance to think.
Okay, that sounds good. So with the head nods of the council, shall we table this for the next meeting? Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right, well, the other two pieces of business, one of them is the City Council Commissions and Board Liaison Appointments. So as we all know, Councilmember Bodie was involved in a tremendous number of things, not least of which was her commitment to the Parks and Recreation Board. And I, I'm not asking for nominations at this time or even self-nominations. I'm just thinking, you know, if you can look at your calendars and see who might be able to be the liaison to the Parks Board, that would be wonderful. We'll talk about this again next time. Also, she was the alternate for the SCA, the Sound Cities Association pick, which is the Policy Initiatives? Issues? Policy and Issues Committee. Thank you, Minister Hill. And that's a very vital and critical role. So I'd love to basically be able to have one of our, one of our council members be there too. So please think about that. If you have questions about the commitment of these, please reach out to me or to the mayor. You bet. And we can let you know basically what sort of, you know, time commitment it is. May I unpoint? Go ahead. Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Fertani. Lori had had agreed to take over as primary liaison or representative to the SCA pick, and she'd been acting in that capacity. Somehow it fell through the cracks, just because of my commitment. I have other pick, other SCA commitments that I do multiple times during the month. And so she very graciously, as alternate, stepped up there. So in the interim right now, until this body has the opportunity to think about their schedule, please reach out. Happy to, it's a, it's a wonderful organization to participate with. It is a time commitment, Wednesday evening, seven to nine, once a month. They have an outstanding new executive director. I'm thrilled that he's in in that role. And so we're, we're really well-served by making sure that we participate in that group. It's a great way to know what's going on with your fellow council members out there and other representatives within the broader Puget Sound region. So it's a, it's really an exciting group. It's a commitment, but it's, it's worthwhile. So in the interim, since there's going to be a meeting coming up, I will continue to serve there. But it would be my hope to step to the background on that one, because I have two other meetings with that, with relative, that body. Not that specific body, but with the SCA. So please, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for outlining the duties and explaining a little bit about it. And so while we're doing this, when does the Parks Board meet? The Rab is Fourth Tuesday? Yeah, I believe it's not till next month. So I think we're okay. Right. But again, it's fourth Tuesday. I think, what is it, seven to whenever they finish, eight o'clock, eight thirty? So again, once a month. So again, please look at your calendars, see what's possible with yours. All right, that said, we'll go to the last item. Are there any questions before I move on? Okay, so the last item is scheduling a council special meeting. So as Councilmember Lebo mentioned, you know, what, what are we doing in terms of ask? We have to formally ask the executive branch, so that is say the mayor, to start the process of finding, selecting a new council member, filling the vacancy. So I, I'm thinking that we need all a primer in this. So that's one of the reasons you have the handout. But I propose that we hold a special meeting, a council special meeting, to openly discuss. We, for instance, one of the things we have to figure out is what are the questions that we're going to be asking the prospective council member applicants? So we need time to discuss this, and I want you to have time to think about it. So I'm proposing, please look at your calendars, I think it's Monday, May twelfth. Immediately after we have our, and I'm gonna get this mixed up, so somebody fix me. I think it's the Shoreline, Kim Moore joint meeting. That's correct. Wait, what? The council, yeah. The council meeting, the joint council meeting. So that's at five forty-five going until six forty-five. So I propose that we meet at seven thirty to give us all plenty of time to get back here. So please look at your calendars and see if that's a reasonable thing. Go ahead. Yeah, if I may, we discussed this about scheduling, and I know everybody's scheduled to challenging. We thought that it might be better to do it the same night, since that's gonna be a short evening, as opposed to trying to encumber another evening for everybody and have it, people to just have to adjust their schedule. It should only be, we suspect, about an hour.
I'm clear.
Okay. Head nods? Okay, so we'll do that then. So Mr. McLean, if you could note, Monday, May twelfth at seven thirty. Thank you. All right, that's me. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor.
So point of inquiry.
Yeah.
So the intent of that meeting, the special meeting, is to discuss the process of the vacancy. And at that time, it would be appropriate to make a motion to ask the city to proceed with a necessary administrative work to fill the vacancy. The electoral filing period is May fifth to May ninth. So will this position appear on the ballot?
Uh, yeah, I can take that absolutely. It will, it will appear on the ballot.
Okay.
This, the appointment by the council, the selection appointment by the council for the, for lack of a better word, caretaker position between now and, we'll discuss the RCWs and the council procedure that's clearly delineated in five-seven in the government on, on that Monday, the twelfth. But that, one of the things to recognize is that this caretaker position is until the election is certified in November, which is roughly November twenty, twenty, twenty-first. And then whoever is seated, they, I mean, somebody could run for election in advance and, and then apply to the council to be selected for this. And, and also in run for the, the short, it's called the short term, for the remainder of Councilmember Bodie's term from the election certification to the culmination of the term, expiration of the term in twenty twenty-seven. Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
You bet. Right. Thank you. And one thing then, Mr. McLean, if you'd note that this special meeting may have an action involved. Right, thank you. Okay. And I, and colleagues, I will say this, it is, it is a very confusing situation. And, and in the midst of dealing with the loss, we're also dealing with the necessity to move forward on this. And so we have the intersection of the state, county, and our own rules that, that apply here. And so it, it, I'm many thanks to Administrator Hill and Attorney Pratt for helping me better understand what we're, the steps we need. So one of the things too, on that date, the twelfth, we will have a series of potential dates, sort of milestones, steps that you will have to move forward with. You have ninety days under state statute to, to seat a select, interview, select, and seat a council member. Otherwise, the King County Council has the option of doing that. So that would be, that expiration of that term, that timeframe is July sixteenth of this year. Any other questions that I can fumble through? Okay, colleagues, thank you for that. And Ellen, thank you. I know you have a time commitment tonight. Are you able to stay on for a little bit longer or?
Yes, I can stand a little bit longer.
Okay, okay. Well, as, as your, as your prerogative, however your time allows. So with that, we're gonna move back to the consent calendar. I entertain a motion for adoption. So moved? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Are you none? It's adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, colleagues. With that, we're moving on to item eight, ordinances and resolutions for introduction referral. Ms. Phillips, I believe we're on to Resolution twenty-five. Barely read this. Two zero one five, authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number three to the Professional Services Contract Agreement, AG twenty-one zero zero two for, with Transportation Solutions Incorporated for the SR one oh four, Portis Place Northeast, Northeast Roundabout Project. Need to check, get some oxygen after that one. Ms. Phillips, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and my condolences to you and everyone in the room and Lori's friends and family. Okay, coming around to the presentation. So thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I'm here to talk to you about the construction management for the roundabout project. As you know, our plan is to advertise this project soon, and we will need construction management staff to assist the city once it is being built. So next slide, please, Matt. Oh, I have the. I'll, I'll use this. Thank you. So for, for clarity, I broke it down into two portions. There's the construction management piece. And that is what the Department of Public Works sought proposals for. And then there's also the construction management on-call support that would be provided by the engineering consultant that we already have on staff, Transportation Solutions Incorporated, and also their sub consultants. And, and that would best serve the city when things come up to, to bridge the gap between design, construction, and here is the city in the middle. So the Department of Public Works sought proposals for construction management. The first one we got was for two point two million, outlier number, obviously way outside of our budget. The next two proposals that we got were, were both fairly competitive. One was for about eight hundred and fifty thousand and the other was for about six hundred thousand. Much more within the range that, that will work for the, a city of this size and a project of this size. And that, that lowest bid came from Consor. And when we did meet with them, we, we did feel that, that they would do an excellent job. And it was also great that they were the lowest bid. So we were happy about that. So the way the, the full package works out, because as you know, we're asking for more than six hundred thousand is the construction management piece for Consor, that part of the amendment is this six hundred thousand dollar number. And then the other two pieces are about seventy-four thousand for TSI and about seventy-seven thousand for all of TSI's sub consultants. And all of this work would take us through the full eighteen months of construction and also a, a brief period of time upfront where they're assisting us with advertisement, opening the bids, and selection of contractor. So those numbers on the previous slide add up to about seven hundred fifty thousand. That is the amendment value that, that we're here presenting and recommending. And that is in contrast to the amount that the CIP has already allocated for this portion of the work, which is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. So it's, it's more by about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And this is, this is for, you know, consideration. That deficit could be covered by the Transportation Benefit District Fund or Traffic Camera Revenue. Those, those are two good ways that it could be covered. But this, this is all the first touch presenting this to you. So, you know, consider it, but I'll, I'll just say that we definitely need construction management, obviously, for this project. And, and we do, we do recommend this amendment that we've put forward. Questions?
Colleagues, questions to Ms. Phillips? Yeah, Councilmember Lebo?
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Very clear presentation. Even I could follow the numbers. I'm very supportive of this. I understand and I do sense that even in a market, there is disparity amongst proposals. So I, I'm supportive of this. Thank you. Oh, is there a recommendation on which fund to use for the balance? The transportation benefit or the O two? Thank you. Is there a recommendation? Okay.
There might be.
Okay. Thank you. If I may, so if we pass this, then do we, at some other point, we're recognizing that we'll have to fund this from one of those two fund sources? Is that something that we would do at a later date with a budget true-up? Or would we have to do it at the time that we pass the motion? It's just an administrative question, and it doesn't have to be answered today.
We could do it either way. We could just, it could be adopted with the original. Or, or we can, we can do it as a true-up as far as what was in the original budget and then make it true to, it can go either way.
Okay, so I would entertain a recommendation the second time we see this. And I would propose that we pass it at that time by suspension of the three-touch rule.
In a second.
Yeah.
Okay. Colleagues, other, other thoughts or comments on, yes, Councilmember Good?
I would like to know if there is a, one benefit over the other of which funds those would come out of.
They both qualify. And so my, going, circling back to our budget and finance conversations with the Traffic Safety Fund and all of the additional commitments that are coming out of that fund is, and as we are navigating the data coming in, revenue versus expenditures and commitments, it's just erring on the side of caution. And so my side of caution would be to back it up with the Transportation Benefit District dollars, which would be one oh four.
Okay, thank you.
That's my full answer. Sorry, it was a little too detailed.
Deputy Mayor Fertani? I know that we, and by the way, thank you, Ms. Phillips, for a great presentation. I'm wondering, we've been talking about this project for some time, and the number for the total cost of the project kept going up. Is this going to increase that cost again, or is it pretty much level at that last number we've seen?
This is an increase of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Councilor Goldman, I saw you started to raise your hand.
Yep, thank you. I, I appreciated the clear numbers. I understand where they're coming from. I, I'm supportive of this, you know, we, the project will need to be managed. I will admit a level of frustration at the continuing escalations. And by, you know, want to be clear, I'm not blaming you. You know, the bids we got are the bids we got. But we just recently patched a six hundred thousand dollar hole in the budget for the roundabout out of the O two fund. And then hot on those heels, we now have a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar hole to patch. And I do think, you know, it's, if we, if we keep getting these holes to patch one effort. if we keep getting these holes to patch one after another, you know, at some point, I think we do need to take stock and say, you know, how many more holes are there going to be? So I would caution us that, I mean, there will, there was going to be some point where we just have to say, yes, it'll, we'll take a hit to our reputation if if the project falls apart. But at some point, we can't afford to just say, here's another 100,000, here's another 100,000. So I am hap- I want to see the project succeed, but I also don't like the fact that it seems that there's continuing escalations.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, other questions for Ms. Phillips? Yeah, Councilor.
More question. What are the chances that this would go up?
Do you mean the entire project budget?
Well, I'm sure that the entire project will probably go up because of materials, but this particular this particular ask.
The this construction management number is a set, as as far as I know. Um, we 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 obviously, since we haven't advertised yet, we we do not know the construction bid numbers. Those are, those are a pretty big question mark to to Larry, uh, Councilmember Goldman's point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilor Lebo.
Uh, I would just offer, though, that in any construction project, there are risks and there are unknown site conditions. And so um, it could occur that if something is found that has not otherwise been factored in contaminated soils, as an example that we recently heard about in another project, those might otherwise increase our construction management services for which they had not already proposed on. So um, this is not while distressing, is not entirely unusual. Um, having been doing this for 37 years, um, if I knew all the answers when I went into the project, I would have long retired. So while it is distressing and there is a lot of anxiety in it, I very much appreciate the professionalism that our staff has approached this with and the sincerity and earnestness that they've proceeded with this to select uh, Consor as the recommended firm based upon seeking different proposals is something that is to be allotted from our, to our staff. So very much appreciate it, but just want to caution our uh, my colleagues that uh, distressing and anxiety is normal with construction projects with these kinds of risks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, Councilor Riddle.
Maybe I missed it, but are these uh, fixed fee or is there hourly up to for any of these consultants?
Um, th- these are contract values. Uh, so the but th- there would have to be, I believe, an additional amendment. This is the third amendment. There would have to be a fourth amendment if we needed to move past these values that are in this third amendment. And that would be brought to you.
I guess I'm just wondering if there's, which will never happen, as my colleague stated, but if a consultant does not use all of, in other words, is it like an hourly where they could come in under or these, this is just a fixed fee contract and this is what it is?
Haven't yet seen a consultant come under. Uh, it might be possible.
It might. There are miracles out there, I suppose. Um, but anyway, I guess I'm just wondering, because we are sort of pessimistic about consultants. So I was wondering if there's any optimism, do we save any money?
I I don't believe it'll end up being less than the extra 128.
Okay, thank you.
Colleagues, other questions for Ms. Phillips? I would just say, just a couple of quick comments. Um, first, um, O2 is more fungible to a degree than O uh, four. My 104, thank you, thank you, the TBD. Uh, so please reach out to Director Vaughn or staff about the the restrictions on the funds. Councilman Relivo makes an excellent point. And the other thing I would ask you all, and particularly Mr. Goldman, please don't talk about holes in the context of 104. We're all, we have a lot of stress and anxiety, don't we, Rebecca and Phil, about the holes on 104? So we talk about filling holes fiscally, let's find another um, metaphor, yeah. So if there are no other questions for Ms. Phillips, thank you very much. We appreciate your excellent work as always. Um, okay, so where are we here? We are on uh, oh, David and Mark, again. Um, I guess, Mark, you're tuning this up, resolution 25 2016 authorizing the mayor to sign the water resource inventory area eight, RIAA, uh, interlocal agreement renewal 26 2035. Director Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. Unfortunately, I don't get to pass this one on.
Oh, it says David and Mark, sorry.
It says one's all me with.
All you.
Deputy Mayor Ferratani's help. Uh, so by way of background, um, there are 15 divisions in the state um, that deal with water quality and salmon. Uh, RIAA Water Resource Inventory Area Eight is um, the uh, section that the city of Lake Forest parks in. There's quite a history, 25 years, a variety of agreements, interlocal agreements, um, plans. Um, the current 10-year interlocal agreement with uh, RIAA uh, is expiring at 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 the end of this year. And so this resolution proposes the the mayor be authorized to sign the next 10-year interlocal agreement. So you have a lot of materials in your packet. Uh, the interlocal agreement is just an extension for 10 years for salmon recovery. Uh, but the the amendments or changes by the board are, in my opinion, minor. They don't affect the mission, um, the plans, the process, and more importantly, the cost share. So the they add clarity to the agreement, they talk about process appeals and how the board interacts and functions. Um, but more or less, the function of RIAA and our participation and the structure stay the same. So staff is proposing uh, that this interlocal agreement be signed this summer. We have till September. Uh, Jason Mulville Kuntz was here to give the presentation. Um, I don't know if you have any questions tonight, but we're available to answer them. Most of the materials in the packet give you the 25-year history.
Thank you, everybody. This is incredibly important work. Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the presentation, Director Hoffman. And uh, one of the things that I wanted to find out was, um, has the city historically applied for any of the salmon recovery council funds uh, in terms of grants and that kind of thing? As far as you know?
As far as I know, no. I I'm relatively new to RIAA, RIAA eight. Um, I spent 10 years on this, uh, nine of that in RIAA seven. So most of my knowledge is projects on this, no Kwame and Skai Komish. I've not run into in my time here, a specific grant or an application for project for restoration here.
Can I continue?
Please. Yeah, and I realize that a lot of that has to do with the fact that we have limited staff, and we don't want to overburden people, but it's a really great resource because uh, I think they've got now a dashboard, right, it has a dashboard now that allows you to look at all the different kinds of salmon grants there are. And one of the nice things, if you could say that about the state budget is coming out, is that a lot of the salmon recovery money has been protected. So it does mean that there's great opportunities for us to be able to apply. And one of my goals anyways, to see those little red fish called the kokani come swim back up our creeks here. So I appreciate basically the fact that we're still interested in being part of this uh, water resource inventory area. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Colleagues, any other questions for Director Hoffman? Um, I served as a liaison to uh, RIAA, RIAA, I always get it wrong. Um, as as well for a period of time. Um, and I have, I can answer questions as well if you have them. Colleagues, any other ones? I I would say, um, you know, um, Jason Mulville, is that correct? He's been longstanding, um, um, i- it for more than 12 years uh, since Councilmember Feeny was, I believe, I I believe I took over from him, I can't remember the time or and then Mark Phillips took over from me after that. But some of the projects that have been accomplished, um, we just toured one recently, which is just extraordinary. We mentioned it before. Uh, literally, you could have walked across the this this creek on the fish. It was absolutely unbelievable. The success of that, the combination of the the RIAA work as well as the the homeowner's commitment to restoration of habitat was absolutely extraordinary. Um, and I have an open invitation from the homeowner to come back again. He wants me to bring my little one so she can see it, see the fish next year. So if you have any questions about it, it's um, this is an environmental uh, program that is enormously successful, and we all benefit for supporting it. Okay, with that, Director Hoffman, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate that very much. And actually, I think uh, the project we toured was in RIAA seven.
Yes.
Yes, so there you go. Uh, Administrator Hill, we're moving on to everybody's favorite subject, particularly the chief's fleet. We're going to talk about administration authorization to purchase police and public works fleet vehicles and equipment in the 2025, 2026 biennium.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and we're going to leave this picture up just because it represents a new vehicle in public works. Um, looks much nicer than the pictures you've seen in my doom and gloom presentations of previous meetings. Um, so to just back up really quick, this is your fourth touch on this item. Um, we began back in the end of March with presentation from the chief on the fleet vehicles for police and um, his issues with maintenance and reliability and a possible um, scenario to outfit that department. We then stepped into the public works fleet, um, same type of a report. Also, um, Director Vaughn and the accounting supervisor went through an exercise to identify the fund balance in the Fleet 501 Fund. Um, which portion of that is related to general fund, which could purchase fleet vehicles? Obviously, when I say general fund, the revenue that has flowed into the fleet fund. And then about 60% of that is identified as coming from capital funds um, within public works. So those could be used for um, vehicles and public works equipment as well. Um, and so what came out of that is attachment three in your packet that shows um, those funds and identifies the amount of revenue that um, council would need to put into each biennium to keep that program moving and the purchases that could be made. Um, obviously, you can't commit future councils to putting that revenue in, but it is our recommendation that that's what it would take to operate this program. One thing Chief and I talked about today, there are several vehicles that um, we still have to figure out how we would look into this program, mostly administration vehicles in the police department, um, which don't see as much use. And the same with the two vehicles in the building and planning department. Uh, and as we've discussed, every vehicle that's proposed for replacement is beyond miles and years on the road. Um, they lack the safety and fuel efficiency. Portions that you would get in a new fleet vehicle. And so um, there's a benefit there as well as being reliable and costing less to maintain. Um, the other thing that we've discussed is the tractor slope mower and riding mower. While dilapidated, have been evaluated, will make it through this summer. Um, it's still part of the same 25, 26 biennial budget. Um, so still need the dollars allocated, but um, we will run those through this year and then um, replace those in 2026, giving Director Dickinson some time to do some research and see what other options are available. Um, something that came up in a meeting yesterday as part of the climate action plan is um, the fact that Public Works has already started moving a lot of that equipment to um, battery powered, where it has made sense. I don't think a tractor slope mower is an option there, but um, the riding mower, maybe. There are some good options out there that we'd like to explore. Um, and so as I stated uh, in here, there are sufficient funds in the Fleet 501 Fund to support the purchases of these requested vehicles. And uh, Matt, can you jump to, oh, never mind, I can do it. Next slide, maybe? Okay, there we go. Um, Councilmember Riddle had asked um, for a little chart identifying where the vehicles are going um, within the public works department. So the top two vehicles, you see the O5 Silverado and the O6 Ford F550. Those will be surplus and replaced with new vehicles of same size, weight capacity. Um, the Chevy Colorado, the 2016, as you see, that jumps up to replace the 2026, uh, 2006, sorry, on-call Chevy Colorado, and then is replaced with a new one-half ton hybrid pickup truck. And because I needed some levity this week, if you look really hard in the background.
I don't know who's on third.
Yeah, we'll see who's on first, uh, little sketch back there. Um, because when I tried to explain this in the budget and finance meeting, I felt like I was trying to play who's on first game. So there you go, that's your levity for this evening. Any questions for me this evening? Anything I didn't cover?
Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill?
Um.
Yes, Councilor Relivo.
Are you, is there a motion here? Because there's a cover sheet, but I don't see the motion.
Um, well, I just, staff recommends the council, you could just take the staff recommendation and turn that into motion. Yes, it was anticipated, um, it was identified as for action this evening.
I'd entertain a motion.
Try not to write your motions.
So I'll I'll move that we authorize the administration to purchase police and public works fleet as outlined in the memo and the agenda cover sheet uh, for the 2025, 2025, 26 biennium.
Do you want more detail or is that sufficient?
Within the staff recommendation, I put all the detail if you want to add that.
As long as, yeah, as long as that's sufficient, I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Are you scratching your face or are you?
I was just scratching.
Okay, it's okay, I have a beard too, my friend, so. Any other questions? Uh, there's a a motion on the table to uh, adopt, to authorize the administration to purchase police and public works fleet vehicles and equipment in the 2025, 2026 biennium. Hearing no more comments or questions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations, Chief. Congratulations, Phil.
I think he's already, I think he just sent the word go to purchase, so.
Go to your cart and hit buy now, you're allowed.
We're gonna, he's going to have a custom plate that says who's on third. Or I don't know who's on third, I'm sorry, I get the joke correct, right, Phil? Okay, uh, we are moving on to, um, where are we? Let's listen to discussion. Oh, budget challenges, goodness, I actually have the floor on this one. Um, Matt, would you tee up that presentation, please? So we're going to continue our discussion of the budget challenges, and I would like to share with you all um, the presentation that um, uh, the chief and I were, gave to the local Rotary group. Um, I think it's very appropriate here in this environment to share that with the broader community. And um, it was well received by our friends at Rotary, and I appreciate their giving me a chance to practice and hone my craft, so to speak. Um, but we have a lot of, a lot of discussion coming up for you all here in the coming months. And um, and uh, so we're going to call this the state of the city, but don't take that too seriously, folks. This is, this is more about broad generalities about where we are. Uh, and it's by no means inclusive of everything that is going on, but it's more directed at the question of um, uh, of budget challenges and the services that we provide to our community uh, and the services they've requested. Matt, would you like me to, was it easier for me to be there or? Okay, and just pointed over my shoulder or? Okay, uh, here we go. Let's see, there we go. We're, we're a city more, more like a village of uh, 13,600 residents. Um, you know, I think we, a lot of you, I'm I'm sure all of you know the history of this community. Um, and uh, I I always wonder why they wanted to call themselves a city back in the day because it didn't really necessarily espouse the values that they were trying to build into the mix. Um, we're barely 3.5 square miles of land, and we're very small. And you all know this, this is largely for some of our friends who have have um, um, just joined our community recently or who are watching from others, um, other cities. We're, we are mighty, uh, and this was a a a reference to Linda Holman, who is small but mighty, one of our great volunteers in community parks, and has been volunteering as a master gardener, uh, teaching master gardening um, to residents for many, many years. Um, right? Let's thinking, you might have to, I don't want to do. Oh, there we go. Um, the city provides a variety of things, and many residents don't recognize. First of all, we have our own police, we have our own courts. We deeply value the services that both our our public safety uh, services provide, but also our judicial system here. Um, many cities and most cities of our size do not have those kinds. Many cities and most cities of our size do not have those kinds of opportunities for the community to be represented locally here in law enforcement and, and the courts, and it's very important particularly to our youth. We also have our Public Works Department, we have our environmental protection that we do through, you know, protecting our trees, our surface water, we have our part, two thirds time arborist on staff. And as I indicated earlier, we've been growing our tree canopy for a large, large period of times. We also provide sewer to our, our community, large part of our community. The sewer system was, was taken over from King County in the nineties, as I recall. And we have some growing pains there, but our staff is doing a really great job of making sure that our sewer system continues to function. We have community development, Director Hafman is here tonight planning building parks. Again, folks, this is not all inclusive. I know I will miss something. Our municipal services department also handles passports, as I mentioned, a very successful service for our community and also generates a, a, a reasonable amount of revenue that is not insubstantial and really helps out our community. And we do a lot more as well as a city. That way. Give it, give it a second. There, well, it's thinking. Okay, we especially value our natural spaces and wonderful trees. I apologize, I should have said these slides queued up without the animations. We're thinking. Our city continues to add public spaces to our community through grants and other methods. Largely the, the waterfront park and, and other open spaces that we have acquired over the last five, six, seven years, Five Acre Woods, we've been, been working very hard to reimburse ourselves through grants and we thank our friends at the county for really contributing to that. We are, have made application for reimbursement through CFT for reimbursement for the Rose property that we acquired that's directly contiguous with Five Acre Woods and that's going to be a wonderful amenity to our community going forward. Lakefront Park, we'll just keep going on here. Big thanks to Councilmember Dembowski, who's been a huge advocate for us. And you may notice that he and the team at King County just got awarded Kenmore, almost eight million dollars for the acquisition of over thirteen acres at Lake Point. So that's a, an extraordinary boon for the environment and for, for our region and our community since we're, we're thick as thieves with our friends in Kenmore, we're, we're all, our success is all interrelated. Trying here, there we go. We secured the, the, the two point one acre parcel, the Rose property. I won't bore you with a lot of these things. We do have dozens of volunteers like Linda, whoever referenced earlier and many, many others who keep the city thriving, not only our parks and open, open spaces, but in social services as well, from NUSA to the Senior Center to a variety of different organizations and also for the arts. The New Shore Lakes Arts Group, we have other, other groups that are continuing to help all of us. And again, this is not exhaustive kind of list. It's volunteers like you all, we had some volunteers here tonight, so that was part of the slide. I left it in deliberately for that, but they're not with us. Hopefully people are online out there in the nanosphere and can or watch it later. There we go. We, a thriving community needs to be well resourced to support our volunteers and we've struggled with that. Making, to, to ensure that we have enough resources to support our volunteers. It's people like Linda and other folks who have volunteered in the parks and other services that we do the best we possibly can. Public Works does a fantastic job of providing them resources for taking out invasives that they pull, other groups that, the Stream Keepers, Stewardship Foundation, many of these organizations do receive support from our Public Works Department. We wish we could provide more. And as I said, we can't rely solely on the volunteers to keep our city moving forward and vibrant. The reality is we have challenges. There's no question. I would like to see the efforts and the resources supporting our volunteers to be double or triple what it is right now in the future, but we simply do not have the resources to do that. We have an outstanding police department that's headed by our chief, our friend Chief Harden. Mike does a fantastic job with our community. The department is extraordinarily well respected in our community and regionally. We have a very low crime rate due to the hard work of our public safety officers, but they also need all of our support. They've been operating on a shoestring budget and it's, it's tremendously challenging for them. And each year, whether it's a mid buy or full biennial budget, we know that we're not able to resource them the way we should as a community. Regional growth on all sides of our city have led to more issues, including cut through traffic, lots of retail crime and burdens on the chief's team. We recently introduced a, we conducted a very robust community survey back in November. We asked our community to weigh in on how they felt the city was doing and what their top priorities are. Again, I've said this and I know it starts sounding trite after a while, but I mean this very sincerely. The response to the survey was heartwarming. The, the number of respondents was, was quite extraordinary and their responses were quite validating of what we're, you know, looking at. The November, whoops, let's go. There we go. November twenty twenty four, seventeen percent response rate indicates a very strong civic engagement. Other communities get much lower. Many cases, they're lucky if they get out of the single digits. Seventy nine percent of the respondents believe Lake Forest Park is moving in the right direction. I remember when Deputy Mayor Bodie and I saw that number, there was some jumping up and down and, and feeling good about all the good work you all and the staff are doing. Those are the kind of moments you savor sometimes in, in the, in the elected realm. Let's see, keep, there we go. Key priorities were identified. Strong, effective police department. We have a very effective police department and they do incredible work given the resources that they have. Well maintained parks and trails, safer sidewalks near schools, hiring a grant writer to stretch our tax dollars was something else that was indicated as a priority. So this is something that's really important and we're going to be talking about this a lot going forward. There have been charts on poster boards around the city hall for many, many years, but I think this one helps quite a bit too. The city services paid for the property with property taxes to King County. The city receives only seven point seven percent of property taxes, less than eight cents out of every dollar that you pay in property taxes. So the Hudson application today, we're talking about the close to ten thousand dollars for the two parcels and a little snippet of, of their where their home resides. That's, that is around five hundred dollars that comes to the city out of that nearly ten thousand dollars that goes out in property taxes. And I'm not going, I certainly am not going to diminish the need for the taxes that go out into other areas. But we need to recognize as a community that we have very little money that we're paying out, out of every dollar that's coming back directly to our community. And this highlights the problem. This is an historic low. I think the high was around eleven cents, eleven point something cents back maybe in the nineties. And it varies because our convoluted property tax system. And very complicated. Again, there we go. That means as this year, twenty twenty five taxes, out of every dollar we pay in property taxes, what goes to the city? Okay, seven point one cents. It's actually seven point, point seven one, excuse me, dyslexia kicking in, three, six, seven cents if you're being absolutely spot on, if you're a numbers geek like me. That's a very low number. These are the cha- That went backwards. Oh, thank you, Matt, I guess, okay. Here are, here are some of our challenges. The cost to main city services are rising faster than revenue. We all know inflation has been rampant over the last number of years, particularly in the public sector inflation over up nearly twenty four percent over four years. The city's one percent revenue increase this year, which is optional at the council at budget time by the council when the council votes in our recommended budget, it only amounts, that increase only amounts to thirty four thousand dollars in revenue to the community. And I will just say this, and I've said this before, if this is confusing, please ask not just you all, but to the public. It is very confusing. It is very difficult to wrap your head around this. If the legislature passes the potential three percent cap, we're still only talking an additional sixty some thousand dollars per year coming to the city. So it is, in the scheme of things, it's very, very, I don't want to diminish the fact that any increase is helpful, but it, it is a challenge. Expenses have risen significantly, insurance by a hundred ninety three thousand, jail by a hundred ninety seven thousand, nine eleven dispatch by two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. So when it comes to the public safety sector, we're looking at massive increases in costs due to inflationary pressures, but also circumstantial pressures. The city made four hundred and fifty five thousand dollars in cuts last year, but it's unsustainable in the long term and it does not address the, the growing gap. I will say, and I've said this before, we're in a lot better shape than most of our neighboring cities. And I, I don't want to take away from their journey and, and the challenges they have. But it's through the good work of you all and the staff over the years that we are in a place where we are able to have choices and able to have this conversation with the community without having to make emergent cuts and emergent decisions that are, would be very uncomfortable for everyone. And I hope we don't ever have to get there. For clarity, this is something that is going to come up as we have this discussion going forward. Traffic safety cameras on one seventy eighth are very successful, massively successful. The average speed on one seventy eighth has gone from over thirty one miles an hour to twenty three point two. It's unprecedented. And we have actually been the talk of the state because we were one of the first people to do this and it is hugely successful. It is not about the revenue, folks. The revenues, however, from these cameras can only be used for pedestrian bicycle safety. The state calls that complete streets. The RCW is there, you can look up what that entails. But we are going to be dedicating those funds to making sure that our streets and our sidewalks and our pathways are safer for everyone. Sidewalks, crosswalks and other safety measures will be funded from traffic safety cameras. There is no revenue grab. Anybody out there who wants to say that, that there's a revenue grab? I'll say it to their face, there is no revenue grab and they better back it up because it is not true. It is a total red herring. It is not true. State law restricts the use of these fines. We all wish there were zero. They're not. So if people want to misbehave on our streets, they can fund pedestrian and multimodal safety as well as traffic safety offers, officers to make you all and your families safer. We cannot use these funds for operational purposes. They are not eligible to be put into operational situations. If you have any questions about this, please reach out to me directly or to Lindsay or to Phil and we can share with you the restrictions on these funds. The fiscal realities are this, the current levels of service are unsustainable in the mid and long term with the reality, realities of our labor market and inflation. Labor is very expensive, inflation continues to be rampant. And we are running about as lean as we can get. Yes, we can cut, but those cuts are going to be very painful and it's going to be at the expense of positions, it's going to be at expense of programs. And as I indicated to you when I presented my budget to you all, this is not the time to be cutting back on social programs, community programs or any of those kinds of things and this, the services this community provides are essential to, to the whole community. Operational efficiencies continue to be a top priority. We hear it almost every council meeting. A staff member is requesting a, a change in an improvement to a software program or to some sort of situation to help with efficiencies, to make them more productive. And some of those investments are, they're absolutely paying off. There's no question about it. And we are going to continue to make sure that we are as, as efficient as we can in all of our departments. Grants and one time revenues are not able to be used for general operations and maintenance. It's a fool's errand to go down that, that path of trying to use one time revenues. There has been a move to loosen the restrictions on REIT one and REIT two. And I think that's a big mistake. REIT one and one, and one and two help fund capital programs and acquisitions of important facilities for this community, particularly for environmental reasons, parks, et cetera. I think that it's a very dangerous game to release, loosen the restrictions on REIT one and REIT two because they have been the source of, for the acquisition of many different properties that are critical to our community. We can talk more about grants later, but this, this administration staff and I know you all are looking out for grants that are available. We talked to neighboring communities about what we have, what opportunities we have. We're going to continue to prioritize of the needs of the community. First, strong, effective police department. That is, that is clearly delineated as a top priority in, in the, in the survey. And it validates what we've heard from our community for decades. Well maintained parks and trails. We all wish there could be more things that are done in our parks and trails. We have a very small staff and we, in Public Works and they do really great work with what they have in, in conjunction with enormous amount of community volunteers from the Stewardship Foundation, Stream Keepers, the Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts, all those folks. Other prioritization will continue to be safer sidewalks near schools as listed in our safer safe streets study. And prioritization that, that was also listed by, highlighted by the survey was hiring a grant writer to stretch tax dollars. We've had this discussion about what we need to do to find ways to multitask, if you will, with a grant writer to stretch our tax dollars so we can attract additional, additional funding. The most important part of this whole discussion is community engagement. The city council, we know you all are thinking about financially sustainable solutions to maintain our levels of service in Lake Forest Park. Our resident input is absolutely critical to shaping future priorities and this is really the beginning of a continuing discussion. During our ongoing discussions, we sincerely encourage community particip- partic- it's off the screen, participation in the contact information is for the the community can reach out to any of us to have this, this conversation and if you all, staff, myself at any time to have this this discussion. And that is really all I have for this part of the conversation. It really is up to you if there, as we go forward in May, council leadership and, and the administration will be talking about additional conversations that we can have with the community and additional information that can be brought to the fore. With that, do you all have any questions for me or for staff? Councilor Goldman?
Yeah, thanks for presenting that. I'm just curious, what sort of reactions or questions did you get when you presented this at Rotary?
I think they were, they were excellent questions. Really, the questions were about the amount, one of the questions was, well, I think two of the questions were about the, the amount of money that comes to the city. And the question, question was about was actually sort of rhetorical. So you're saying that we cannot, that the city cannot continue without finding additional revenue sources. I mean, continue on this path without cutting or finding additional revenue sources. It was very positive and unfortunately we didn't have a whole lot of time. I think we had about eight minutes, Chief. Can you think of other questions? I, I think I covered him. On point, Councilor Goldman, I have made an overture to, to Rotary to come back for an additional half hour if they have any questions since they had a really busy schedule and, and I, I didn't have a whole lot of time to answer questions because of their time constraints. But it was a, it was a well received questions and I think that, I think I look forward to additional questions and comments. I think you were starting to raise yet, yep. Do you have any refer to any?
Yep. And thank you again for the presentation and for presenting.
Yep. And thank you again for the presentation and for presenting to our local civic organizations. I imagine there will be more of this, this kind of outreach in the future. Yeah, one thing, one cautionary tale I did see was uh, some of you may have been following what Edmund City Council has been doing, and one of the things they were considering was selling two parks. And uh, yeah, uh, yeah, you should have seen the community outcry from that. I would expect our community to be exactly the same way. So in terms of revenue sources, you know, that's probably not an option. So we're, we're going to have to really think about this.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Fertani. I appreciate you bringing that up. I read that with um, real uh, surprise and, and horror. Um, I think one of the things that's comforting, should be comforting for all of us, that many of the parks that we have acquired have been purchased with grant funds and their, and restricted funds. We would not be able to sell uh, uh parcels, but, but that is the reality of the world in many cases, and it does illustrate the level to which communities have ha- are having to go, and it's very sad for Edmunds. I really, um, one of the parks has been, I think, I think they've had it for fifty years, which is very sad. Colleagues, other questions? Okay. Well, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate that um, Deputy Refertoni only snored once, so that was, that was, I guess I kept your attention. Um. We've covered other business. We're moving on to council committee reports. Are there any? Let's start with committees and then move to council member reports. Any council committee reports? Chair Lebo, did you want to talk about budget and finance?
Actually, on budget and finance, we covered, gosh, we covered our fleet, fleet assets. Oh, yes, and the dashboard. Um, for those that didn't have the opportunity to see the dashboard with regard to our first quarter, I would recommend that you have an opportunity to take a look at it. Um, as Director Vaughn pointed out, uh, some of the expenditures reflect sort of annual costs, and so they are accrued in the first quarter. So you might see that there's um, tracking either higher costs based upon the value for that particular line item in relationship to where we are in the biennium, which is normal. Um. It's always appreciative of how the staff and the city and Director Vaughn manage our overall expenditures and our budget as well as our revenue to reflect that um, we are trending well with regard to our biennial budget, um, but there's always a cautionary note, which is things may change, and um, they're being very prudent with the money. So if you have an opportunity, uh, look at the dashboard and uh, view the minutes. So uh, very good discussion, and those that were able to make it, um, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair Lebo. Actually, I, I would characterize it as an outstanding discussion, so thank you for that. That was very good. Uh, other committee reports, moving on to um, let's see, um. Tree Board did not meet. Yeah, okay, I think, anybody else? Okay, council member reports, anybody? Anything that they want to share? Yes, Deputy Merfert-
Yeah, really briefly, this was some time ago, but the February meeting, and it was a February? No, it was March, meeting of the uh, Lake Ballenger Forum. Um, uh, one of our residents, Brian Saunders, brought a student of his to talk about some of the work that the Use It Program that Stream Keepers or that is, sorry, uh, um, the stewardship uh, sponsors. Um, it brings basically a couple of dozen uh, um, college generally juniors and seniors, but sometimes basically uh, underclassmen to uh, Lake Forest Park to sample all kinds of things about the biology and chemistry of our streams. If you're interested, you know, contact Brian, of course, or come to the University of Washington undergraduate symposium, which is happening next month.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, other council member reports. Uh, I will be very brief. Um, remember Arbor Day? Uh, it was Earth Day a couple of days ago. Arbor Day on um, Saturday, Horizon View one to two thirty, I believe, up there. Uh, I think that it'll be, that'll be really fun uh, with the group. Um. Let's see, anything else coming up here? Um. Pardon me? Oh, Pack the Park, yes, the tenth, that's coming up. Sign up, everybody. Um. Chief, you're going to run in a superhero costume again? Let's see. Uh, and uh, it's very dog friendly, so it's, it's going to be fun, or cat friendly if you want, right? There, we've had somebody threatening to bring one of their cats or two in one of those bubble backpacks, which is kind of fun, but it's a fun, it's a fun run, and it's up Perkins, and um, you get to test drive Perkins in consideration of a change there at some point. It's pretty, pretty cool. If you don't run, please walk. It's, it's, it's really a, a fun event. Um. Two other things, just really quickly, um, you know, just when you think you've seen it all in this community, you can't imagine the amount of effort that staff had to go through with dealing with a deer carcass, right, chief? Um. Yeah, jurisdictional issues and anyway, um, I, I would urge my colleagues to, if you want to, uh, uh, an interesting um, laugh, I guess, ask the chief about it or ask Rebecca about it. It's kind of interesting. Um, you'd think that these things get taken care of quickly, but not so sometimes. So um, I thought I'd seen it all. And the last thing I want to say, there is a big hole here, um, and there will be for some period of time. But as I sat at the meeting, um, the committee, the whole meeting with Administrator Hill there, I looked up here and I was deeply comforted by the commitment and the expertise and the camaraderie and the civility that you all bring to the mix. And I know that Lori would be honored that you continue on her, her, her good work and the good work that you're all doing. So um, it'll be an adjustment, and um, we will look forward to the process to selecting a, a new policymaker to join your group, and um, and I thank you all for your patience as we navigate very um, uncharted and difficult, difficult waters. With that, Administrator Hill, anything you want to highlight?
Very well said, and I don't want to follow that, but I will. Um, on Tuesday night, I presented to the CFT Committee on our application for the Rose property, and so we will hear in July whether we're recommended for funding that would flow early twenty twenty-six. And that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you, Administrator Hill. De- Deputy Merfertani?
And uh, on top of that, your administrator's report, as always, is wonderful. Wanted to call out one thing, which was the uh, dump, illegal dumping on one eighty-second, um, well, actually down on uh, Perkins Way, in fact. Um, I was going to call it in. By the time I got home and get, went back there because I couldn't remember exactly where it was, it was gone. So Public Works is all over that. So thank them so much for that.
Uh, did you hear the story?
I may have had an early morning text from a council member, um, and Rebecca and her team were right on it, so, yeah.
Did you hear the story about the pink couch?
Yeah, that was the pink couch.
Oh, was it? Oh, that was the pink couch. Okay, that was it. Okay, yeah, that was, that was crazy. We've had some really interesting things dropped on the side of the road, so um, they were all over it. Councilwoman Goldman?
Um, yeah, I'll just add that when I look through the, the police items in the administrator's report, I appreciate that there's usually multiple that reference racer or saying that someone was getting mental health treatment or being sent to connections. So I appreciate that camaraderie between our police department and, and racer.
Absolutely. Chief, welcome.
That was my opening, because I really wanted to say something about um, Deputy Mayor Bodie. She didn't know much about the police department when she first got on, and the first thing that I did is sit down and have the, you know, the one-on-one to kind of introduce you. And she was extremely surprised on all the stuff that goes on in the city because everybody thinks it's so quiet and nothing happens in Lake Forest Park, and it really opened her eyes. And we did nothing in the CA report prior to that. It was barely one line. And she was the catalyst for where we are on the CA reports. And Councilmember um, Goldman, just by saying that, I, I do look forward to hearing the nice things that are said in there, but we have this narrative of letting the community know through the CA report, and she was one hundred percent the reason why it is what it is, and we will continue to do for the last four or five years here. So um, the police department super appreciates everything that she did for the police department, advocated for and supported. Um, our police department is saddened to see the family, or to see Lori go, and we um, put our hearts out to Peter and his family, um, and just wanted to say that. I have more to say, but he said I have thirty seconds, so. Yeah, I, but uh, you as all colleagues, um, deep heartfelt uh, thoughts to your, to your group as well, so.
Thank you, chief. Yeah, and as I indicated earlier, it was very fitting that it was a member of the department that lowered the flag on Sunday. So, is there anything else for the good of the order? Friends. There are none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.